We're having technical difficulties. And that did it. Turn it off, turn it back on again. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your patience with our technical difficulties up here. We just had a little problem getting some documents open, so we're just at 5:01. Before we start our regular agenda for tonight, as you can see up on the boards here in the boardroom, we would like to take a moment to come together with our school community during a really extremely difficult and sad time. Late last week, we received some really shocking and heartbreaking news. One of our newest graduates from the class of 2024, Gina Schaefer, she tragically passed away in an accident. And Gina was an academic standout. She was one of our valedictorians. She was beloved pretty much by everyone that knew her, was deeply involved with planning the baccalaureate ceremony among her many accomplishments. But even more than that, she was a really kind and generous person. She was involved with our unified program. She was just a very genuine friend to everyone that she met. I've heard nothing but positive comments about what a good human being she was. So we would like to take a moment to let you know that there will be more information coming on a celebration of life. The family, as you can imagine, is going through a really tough time trying to plan that sort of thing right now. But we would like to take a moment of silence to support and hold the family of Gina Schaefer close in our hearts. Please join us for a moment of silence. And thank you for everyone. So now, as we gavel in this evening, it is 5:03 PM on the 5th of August, 2024, and this is the regular meeting of the Monticello District 882 School Board. Please rise with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is to approve the tentative agenda.
It's all moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of the tentative agenda becoming our permanent agenda for the evening, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have under that approval of minutes, personnel matters, and the recommendation of an ad hoc committee. Members received this information in advance and had opportunities to ask any questions. So we do move those together as a consent agenda. Moved by Jeff Hegley.
Second.
Seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as posted, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Consent agenda passes six zero. Moving on to number six, this is a new resolution for the school districts this year, calling the general election, the three seats that are up for election on the school board with the general election this year. Oh, I skipped, skipped ahead. I apologize for that. I scrolled a little too fast on my computer screen. We have citizens' comments this evening, and I desperately apologize for skipping over that. That was totally a mistake on my part. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Monticello District 882, Policy Number 206 governs our citizens' comments, and we have also described the process with a video and guidance on our website. We welcome citizens to address the board at each regular meeting. School board meetings are conducted under Minnesota Open Meeting Law statutes. Open meeting laws are different from a public hearing or an open forum, such as the truth in taxation. There is no back and forth question or answer period or discussion with board members of the content of the citizens' comments during open meeting, and no action will be taken by the board. However, comments from our citizens are very important to the board, and speakers are contacted before and after a meeting to provide opportunities for follow-up and to continue to work on concerns or provide closure for an issue that's been brought to us. Citizens' comments in the open meeting by law must not violate student data privacy or personnel data privacy. Each citizen is welcome to address the board for up to three minutes. A small digital timer will be displayed on the screens in the boardroom for timekeeping for each speaker. And this evening, the board would like to warmly welcome our first speaker, Ms. Holly Sunderland, to the podium. Welcome, Holly. And I do apologize, that was not a, that was just a total screw-up on my part to skip over that on the agenda.
Hi, everyone. To begin, I'd like to remind the board of the district's motto, every kid, every day, and your pledge that we are dedicated to the education and well-being of the students. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you our concerns regarding a district practice that puts at risk the emotional and mental well-being of the district's grade school children. Unfortunately, we've been informed by the district that this is a common practice to transfer children from one elementary school to another, with the decision based on nothing other than an arbitrarily established borderline, with little, if any, concern for the well-being of the child. A case in point that exposes this unconscionable practice is a family we know that has an eight-year-old child who is being arbitrarily transferred from Little Mountain to Pinewood despite a very direct medical recommendation to leave the child in its current school to avoid potentially serious anxiety issues, anxiety and eating disorders due to complex and life-threatening food allergies. As we understand it, the little person has a history of panic attacks triggered by inconsistency in surroundings of abrupt change. The district has in its possession a copy of the medical recommendation, yet plans to transfer the child to Pinewood anyway, thus leaving his friends, teachers, and current familiar physical environment notwithstanding. Apparently, the little person has been doing very well within ME. His history of panic attacks impeding his ability to learn, to feel safe, and eat have been mitigated due to the consistency of being at Little Mountain. The district is imposing this insensitive and medically discouraged transfer in violation of the inter-district cooperation agreement signed by the district and the parents of the child being placed at risk. We have a family friend who is a retired superintendent of schools, having been an elementary school teacher, an elementary principal, superintendent of schools, and later attended law school and became a law professor. He has an adult daughter with serious anxiety issues. He shared with us that had he known the potential damage of accepting professional superintendent advancements in the uprooting of his anxiety-vulnerable child to new school districts, he would have remained where he was and honored her needs rather than his own professional aspirations. He feels his advancements in required relocations had a profound lasting effect on his daughter's anxiety issues due to his ignorance, and now the family and daughter live with the consequences. I assume the board is fully aware that the district is currently facing the significant time and expense of legal action in its attempt to defend this practice, policy, which is putting the risk, putting at risk the well-being of children under its protection. To ensure the board has all the pertinent information leading to the pending legal action, the family involved has gathered relevant documents and supporting information that will be mailed to each board member and the district superintendent following tonight's meeting. Thank you all very much for this opportunity to comment on this unfortunate situation that is diametrically opposed to the Monticello School District's philosophy of every kid, every day.
Thank you. So now, moving on to item number six. As I started to introduce before, this is a new procedure that the state is requiring us to have a resolution calling the school district election. Usually, it was just posted like every other position, but we're required to have a resolution for that this year. Can you please, Gavin, pull that up on the big board so that people can see it? And I would like to add that as we scroll down, can you scroll down further, Gavin? Where it says candidate A, B, and C, that does not necessarily mean that that's how it will look on the final ballot. We have our position for filing is open now until the 13th of August, so we are unable to put the candidate names in there this evening for the purpose of the resolution. All candidates who file will be listed as candidates. Write-ins are a separate situation. So we have before us a resolution to call election for school board, three school board seats for the general election on November 5th. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion to call the election is six and zero. Items numbers seven and eight, we'll get through rather quickly. To explain what these resolutions are, the Minnesota School Board Association, in addition to the School Board, School Administrators Association, and School Business Professionals Association, put together a platform to lobby our legislators every year for things that need to be changed within the school laws that govern schools. And so, in order to put things onto that platform for our lobbyists to work with the legislature, there has to be a resolution process. Member Casey Root and myself are both delegates to the Delegate Assembly for the Minnesota School Board Association, which is approximately 100.
122.
122 representatives across the state of Minnesota, so we can bring forth resolutions for legislation to advocate for things such as additional funding for school boards. So the first resolution we have is for the construction materials tax. And so this is a bit difficult to understand, but it's easy to read on there. School boards have the opportunity to purchase individual items tax exempt, but that's not how we fix things. We contract with contractors who have to purchase the things to fix something or to build something, and they incur the sales tax. Then the school district has to go back and file a bill with the legislature to have that reimbursed. And I think there were five last year, five or six school districts across the state that took that advantage. So this bill hopes to address that issue of the sales tax for construction materials, which for those districts was over $1 million last year. So I'm going to have a member Hegley read the resolution.
Second.
Motion was for the resolution read by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And motion passes six zero. And then we also have proposed resolution lifting the long-term facilities cap. Again, if you pull that up on the board, Gavin, so everyone can read that, or you can read it later at your leisure. There's a group of large districts in the Twin Cities that do not have a cap on what they can spend to fix their building, and the whole rest of the state does. And we're asking the legislature yet again to lift the cap on long-term facilities maintenance. If we scroll down a bit, many of the buildings across the state are over 100 years old. They obviously need a different level of maintenance dollars than a brand-new building would need. The difference in those buildings, smaller and rural districts are capped at $380 per pupil, but the alternative facilities districts do not have that cap. They're able to raise money through their levy system in a different way than we can. And so for parity and equity among all of the districts, we're asking the legislature to revisit that cap of $380 per pupil.
Resolved MSBA urges the legislature to eliminate long-term facilities maintenance LT for all districts to be statewide to repair facilities.
Second.
Resolution read by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to Safe and Healthy Culture, we have this evening Tina Burkholder and Laura Whacker Hansen, our new Director of Nutrition Services, going to give us an update on our food service plan for the district. Welcome, Laura and Tina.
It's on present mode. Of technology. Thank you for having us tonight. We're going to give nutrition service update and also talk about lunch prices for next year. So will students have free meals this coming school year? And the answer is yes. Nothing has changed from legislation this past year. Last year, in 2023, Governor Walz signed a Minnesota Free Meals Bill, and that's still intact. Students are eligible to receive one reimbursable breakfast meal and one reimbursable lunch each day. What does a reimbursable meal include? So on here, on the slide, I have what's included for elementary and secondary, both breakfast and lunch. They're pretty close and similar, but there are slight differences in portions. Oh, yep, I can. Want to hover over, Laura. What's not included is a carton of milk, any snack items or à la carte items like chips, cookies, those sort of things, a second entree, so if somebody wants a second cheeseburger or a pizza slice, so forth, that is not included. Second meal, so if somebody is really hungry, very, has a good metabolism and needs that, a second meal would not be covered. Meals that don't have all those components would not be covered, so you got to make sure you have your fruit and veggie portions on there. And then any meals served to teachers, staff, or other adults that aren't in the program. So our cooks, for example, they're in the program, they work in the program, they are entitled to free meals. So tonight, we're asking for approval on our lunch prices. Our breakfast prices are good. Over the summer, the state always looks at what the adult minimum price should be. So our breakfast price is okay, but our lunch price needs to be increased to $5. And then when you look at the second entree, we want that to be about 55% of what the full meal is, so that changed a little bit as well. People sometimes ask, should I still complete a meal benefit application? Yes, because families would be entitled to other benefits, such as reduced athletic rates, possibly class fees, other things that you could get in the community, whether it's through the community center or library. So yes, families should complete that, and they can apply on our infant campus through the parent portal, but we do have paper applications that families can complete as well. And lastly, free meals are only for scheduled school days and when we're in person. So if we have a snow day, digital day, we would not be able to do free meals for that. And that we still have our Policy 534 that talks about past negative balances, because we're still working with families to make sure we have all those past negative meal balances from the prior years cleaned up. Any questions? And again, just looking for approval on the adult meal price and the second entree price.
Tina, are you able to tell us in an aggregate form how much?
Oh, I think. We're still working on some of it, because, for example, some of our seniors, if they had a positive balance, they gave it to the angel funds. And so we're working on cleaning up some of the older debt first, and if they had a free reduce status, trying to work on that first. So I think it's around $3,000.
Legislature approved the free meals. So we have, was, did that come down because of the angel fund?
No, people, families were just cleaning up their outstanding debt and trying to really have good procedures and lines intact where, you know, if you're just getting a free meal, come here, but if you want that à la carte, trying to make sure that they have balance, a positive balance first before selling those chips, cookies, so on and so forth.
Any other discussion from the board? Is there any further discussion or questions for Tina?
Yeah, I'll ask a follow-up question. Is the $3,000 all from last year, some of that older than one year?
Probably older than one year.
So Mark, when the legislature approved the free meals, they did not wipe out lunch debt across the day. debt across the state? So it's up to each district to figure out what to do with their lunch debt.
Is it worth it to keep chasing it?
Well, I'm not allowed to. It's part of the food service fund, I'm not allowed to forgive it. If we do forgive it, then we gotta move it to the general fund.
Can you also, for the benefit of the audience and anyone watching, talk about the angel fund and what that is?
Yep, so through the angel fund, whether it's outside donations or internally, where families, like have seniors that are not with the district anymore, they have five, ten dollars instead of us sending a check to the families for whatever's remaining, we give it to the angel fund. And so the angel fund, we're trying, I don't know if we've had our procedures quite written down, but we would like to look at the oldest debt first, the highest debt, if they're free and reduced, and trying to work our way down and having clear procedures, so we're not, doesn't look like we're playing favorites.
But people could donate to that from outside the facility as well, so I think people have done that before in the past. Any other questions for Tina? And Laura is gonna address us as well?
I did not have anything prepared. I can answer some questions if you would like. I have been deep in the logistics of starting our program off and contracts and all of that stuff, so Tina took care of this presentation for today.
Does anyone have any questions for Laura? I heard you've been crunching the milligrams of everything and the milli equivalents to make sure we meet all the requirements.
Yes, absolutely. Very busy working on menus and procurement and getting everything set up for the start of the school year.
When will we be able to see those new menus?
I am hoping within the next two weeks.
Wonderful. Any other conversation about the food service program from the rest of the board? Okay, so we have before us a, we have to approve the meal prices for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented. There are some slight increases on the adult meals and the entrees.
So moved.
Moved by Jamie Seaborn, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the lunch prices as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And motion passes six, zero. And then I believe Tina Burkeholder's gonna remain at the podium and give us an employee health insurance update. Thank you Laura for coming.
Yes, so my second update is on employee insurance. So, we have a state statute that regulates this process, State Statute four seventy-one dot six one six one subdivision eight. So within this statute, we have to do RFP every two years. Our last cycle was actually three years, because we got to lock three years of a zero percent cap, so we're very fortunate for that. Also, we have to send this to three carriers, and one of it has to be PEAP, which is the Public Employee Insurance Plan, I believe. We have to publish this twenty-one days before bid opening in our paper and open it in front of the largest bargaining group. So within our timeline, this is how it applied to us, on May sixteenth, we put it in our paper. June tenth was our first initial bid, as were due, and then we opened them on the eleventh with our insurance committee, which included our largest bargaining group. July eighth was the best and final bids were due, and we opened those on July ninth. And then throughout, since then, through July thirty-first, just getting feedback from our insurance committee members and meeting with them to see which plans would work best for the budget and employees. And the administrative team wrote the rationale, or basically me, on the selection and then presenting to the board tonight. And then our renewal is actually October first. Our plan year goes from October one to September thirtieth. We have a plan year that's different than the calendar year. So our insurance committee members that were present, myself, Rob Daniker, Amy Staubach, Zach Harry, Julie LaRocque for the clerical group, and then the teachers that were present as well during those insurance committee meetings. Our admin team comprised of Superintendent, myself, and Director of Human Resources. Also, within this process, you cannot decrease the value of any insurance plan. It has to have the same benefit, you know, out-of-pocket, you know, thresholds, deductibles, that sort of thing. If we do change it, then we have to have approval from the group. So, in our process, we stated that what our plans were and made sure no benefit decreases in the process. Our initial bidders, Health Partners, who is our current provider, Blue Cross Blue Shield, who we had many, many years prior to Health Partners, Medica, United Healthcare, and PEAP. So with the best and final bids, we looked at Health Partners, where their proposal had an overall twelve percent increase. There were some differences between the plans, but overall, it was a twelve percent increase with a year-two cap of twelve percent. Blue Cross Blue Shield overall was eleven point four one percent, and then year-two rate cap of twelve percent. Medica, overall, seven point five percent. Again, there might be some changes within the different plans, and then a year-two cap of thirteen percent, and a wellness credit of a hundred and fifty thousand. So the insurance committee recommended Medica, where we have a seven point five percent overall increase for this coming year, and then the second plan year of a maximum thirteen percent. So that's the max. Hope, there's a chance we could get something lower, but you never know, but thirteen percent is our cap. And then that hundred and fifty thousand wellness credit, and we'll have to find out more about that once this gets more solidified. And then here's our rationale, talking about the process and the statutes, when the bid openings were, and then our final selection of Medica moving forward. So, our next step at the district office is to make sure we get all the enrollment, open enrollment materials gathered, having a good transition plan, so that people can decide, do they still wanna stay with their plan or change things, change to a different plan? Because with our, something new this coming year, we do have a cap on single insurance of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per month. So our VIBA plan wouldn't be a hundred percent covered, and so we just wanna make sure employees are aware of that, if they decide if they wanna stick with that or change to something Any questions on the process and plans?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, Tina, am I correct that all of our employees in the district, no matter what their job is, have the same health insurance and the same contributions at this point?
If they're, if we have contracts that are not settled, they are frozen based on what's in their last contract.
So the custodians group has the same access to this health insurance that the teachers group does, as an example? So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I just, the hundred and fifty thousand wellness credit, can you just review that one more time to explain what that, where that's going?
I don't know exactly what it means, but it's something we'll want to dig into. So I don't know if it's having access to certain services or what that entails. We, they didn't, once we solidify with them, then we'll...
Yeah, because I didn't recall seeing that in the meetings that we were in with the board views where we went through.
Yep, it was in the PowerPoint, so it was, it was by the rate caps.
Lot in there, too.
Yes, there was a lot.
So one October is when the new health insurance with Medica will come into effect. This is not an action item for the board, the decision's already been made by the insurance committee. So it's one October is when everyone will be transferring to the new Medica plan.
Our open enrollment process is normally mid-August to mid-September, that people have time to look at the plans. In the past, we've had videos that people can listen to at home with a spouse, because insurance is not everybody's wheelhouse, so it helps to have a second set of ears sometimes on what's being offered and knowing the details.
And so the seven point five is much better than what was anticipated on there?
Yep, the hit a process did what I think it was intended, it tightened the belts of everybody. We didn't deserve a seven point five percent, our claim history, even after the process spiked up a little bit, so we were fortunate to get that seven and a half percent.
Any questions from the rest of the board, Tina, regarding health insurance? Okay, thank you Tina. Now we'd like to welcome Mr. Rob Daniker for, to the podium, Director of Human Resources and our Policy Chair, for first reading of policies. Welcome, Rob.
Cheers, Eberth, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. So we have two policies for first read tonight. The first one is Policy six eleven on homeschooling. The purpose of this policy is to recognize and provide guidelines in accordance with state law for parents who wish to have their children receive education, homeschool that is an alternative to an accredited public or private school. Our current policy on homeschool for Policy six eleven is word for word what is in current MSBA recommended draft policy. The reason we approached it tonight as a policy committee was Director Fasching, our Director of Teaching and Learning, has developed a process and procedure document that helps to inform this policy. And so, what the policy committee decided to do was add a line under Article Two of this draft policy that states our district's homeschool process and procedural expectations are outlined in a document located on the district website, and then that is hyperlinked as well, so people would be able to easily access that process and procedure document. So functionally, no significant change to this policy as it was revised, other than to add that additional information.
Questions from the board for Rob on Policy six eleven for homeschooling? Discussion? Okay, thank, Policy six thirteen?
Right, Policy six thirteen, this is graduation requirements. The purpose of this policy is to set forth requirements for graduation from the Monticello Public School District. As the board calls, this policy has been sitting in first read for a little bit of time. We had a first read initially a couple months back, and then had to table this progressing to second read, because we had some additional revisions to make. Significant, of significance this year is the high school transitioning from a semester calendar to a trimester calendar, and that informs the bulk of the changes that are in this recommended, this revised draft, as it were, specifically around graduation credit requirements. And so what the high school administration has done is to, again, make the transition from the semester to the trimester model, include the relevant references within the graduation requirements. So for instance, you know, it articulates that for the next four years of graduating students from Monticello High School, each will have a different number of credits required for graduation because of the transition to trimester and the amount of time they've spent in a trimester system. And so this'll take, again, four full years to cycle through to where we get back to a pretty well-grounded and relatively constant graduation credit requirement model. And so that is kind of the bulk of it from the thirty-thousand-foot level, from getting closer ground level. There are some modifications that are being recommended, specific to, in some cases, change in state statute, for instance, the requirement that the high school teach and educate students on a course in personal finance, for instance. So those are some of the recommended changes as well.
Any questions for Rob on Policy six thirteen? This is just first read, so we're not approving tonight. Any questions? We talked in policy committee quite a bit about the confusion moving from trimesters or semesters to trimesters, and that that's gonna be a learning process for everyone, probably for more than a year, as we move into that. And it was reassuring to hear that the high school principals have spent quite a bit of time addressing that and coming up with informative measures for parents. So, I'll look forward to hearing more. And then we're moving into the high school handbook this evening as well.
Yes, and so the last piece of the agenda for tonight is the approval of the billing handbook for the high school. And so again, this was slightly delayed because of some of the revisions that were reflective of the change to the trimester model. Also of note, the policy committee did have extended conversation around various different areas of the proposed handbook. One of them is specifically regarding the high school parking policy and the collection of fees for high school parking. That is actually, it's not only included in the high school handbook, but it's also the heart of Policy five twenty-seven. And so, the policy committee basically agreed, came to a common understanding that there would be further conversation regarding Policy five twenty-seven specifically to those fees at the high school parking, for high school parking privileges, and the, that would be covered at a work session to come as a starting point.
Correct. Any discussion regarding the high school handbook? Board members?
Well, what they are obligated to do is provide the students with the understanding that the expectation that they have read and understood, the handbook exists. It's kind of a, an annual acknowledgement, as it were, for what we do on the employee side. And so principals typically do the same with their students, and they collect acknowledgement to reflect the same.
Any further discussion or questions on the high school handbook from the board? Okay, so we need to take an action this evening to approve the high school handbook. Moved by Jeff Hegley to approve the high school handbook as written.
Second.
Seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the high school handbook as written and presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. High school handbook is approved. Thank you, Mr. Daniker. Just as a reminder, we approved the other elementary and middle school handbooks at a different meeting, so this one was just a little bit off-cycle. So, is there any additional comments or new business from board members this evening? Finding nothing else to discuss, and our agenda is complete. We will adjourn at five thirty-nine PM. We are adjourned. Thank you, people.